That was a five hour. I got yelled at for not telling my wife that I was gonna stay that late. I had one chance in a five minute break and I ended up yapping to some, one of the people at utility. I think it was Pete. And I used up my five minutes. I went into the next and I got out at 10:00 and then I, whatever I did, but I didn't get home till. Yeah, I, boy, she said, "Why did you not?" Da-da-da-da. I've been married forty-one years and I'm still getting told that stuff.
All right, sorry to kick everybody out.
Recording in progress.
All right, this time I'd like to call Reverend Ray from Advent Christian Church to come up and give an invocation.
Scripture reminds us, first of all then, I heard that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings, for presidents, for governors, for mayors, for aldermen, alderwomen, for all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who declares all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. Father God, we do thank you for this community that we live in. Father, I thank you for each one of these that are on the council, for those who are willing to give of their time and of their service to help all of us to live better lives in this community. Father, I pray that as they meet tonight, that your Spirit would come and bring to them wisdom and understanding, patience. We thank you, Lord, for our community, for all those who serve, for police, fire, and for those on the council. Father, we hold them all up to you and pray this all in the name of your Son, our risen Savior and our soon coming King, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Rizanson.
It is 7:04 PM.
Davis?
Here.
Lampy?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Barts?
Here.
Blanke?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Arnett?
Present.
Wetzel?
Here.
Molenhauer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America and the republic of which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, minutes of the council meeting from October 7th.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for adoption of those minutes.
Motion by Berg. Second by Smith. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all's a favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. If you wish to come up to the microphone, you have up to three minutes, please state your name and address. Okay, no one's jumping, so. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Blanke.
I'd like to make motion to amend our agenda and move our employee recognitions ahead of the reports.
Okay, we have a motion to move the agenda. Second by Lampy. Okay, all's a favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So next, we'll go, move on to communication recommendations, employee recognitions. At this time, I'll call Nikki Zimmerman up here first.
Tonight, we probably recognize and celebrate Nikki for twenty-five years dedicated service to the city of Watertown. Nikki brings her warm spirit, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to everything she does. She's an invaluable part of our team and her deep knowledge of building safety and zoning functions truly makes sure the glue that holds our office together and keeps running smoothly. Through changing times and increasing responsibility, Nikki's friendly presence and steadfast dedication have left a lasting impact on coworkers, city leaders, and residents alike. Her contributions not only ensure the efficient operation of our office, but also strengthen the very heart of the community. Thank you, Nikki, for your exceptional service, your loyalty, and for the countless ways you've helped make Watertown a better place each and every day.
Speech, speech. Next, I'd like to call Eric Gutzdorf up here. Twenty-five years as well. You said twenty-five years in October, right?
Today, we proudly celebrate Eric Gutzdorf for his twenty-five years of dedication to the city of Watertown. Currently with the Park Rack and Forestry Department, Eric's willingness to assist the Main Street program with banners, flowers, cornstalks, and holiday decor with each passing season to create a welcoming atmosphere for the residents and visitors is always appreciated. Many community organizations such as Watertown Youth Baseball and River Fest know Eric by name, partly because Eric is always down for conversation, but more so because they truly are pleased with the pride he takes in the details of setup to make every event in our park system a huge success. Your hard work in maintaining our parks has made a lasting impact on the beauty and enjoyment of our community spaces. Through every season and project, your reliability and commitment to helping create welcoming parks with our, for our residents and partnering organizations. Thank you for your years of service, teamwork, and excellence. You are a valued part of our parks family and we are grateful to have you, for all you have contributed to the city of Watertown.
Okay, next, we'll move on to reports. We have licensing board minutes from September 10th, Parks Recreation and Forestry minutes from September 15th, licensing board minutes from September 16th, WMSP Board of Directors minutes from September 16th, Finance Committee minutes from September 22nd, Plan Commission minutes from September 22nd, Plan Commission minutes from September 29th, Public Safety and Welfare minutes from October 6th, and Site Planner Review Committee minutes from October 13th.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Blanke.
Just one item on the Park Rack and Forestry minutes. I thought it was interesting to point out, since we had former Alderman Schmid here last week asking about the specific issue, the changes at Union Park. I know that there's a lot of concerns, at least from him, and he's heard from some of his neighbors, since he used to represent them, about the changes occurring with the Gaga Ball pit and the Possum. So, I, I just want to make sure that we stay informed and have some input from the residents of the neighborhood, because we do have a neighborhood park system, and find out what their concerns are and what they actually want in that park.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blanke. Mr. Lampy?
I, I think we probably should take that up at, at Park and Rack, certainly the, one of the committees on which we, we serve. This, this is an area, I know, we, we did go ahead and remove the backstop bleachers and benches at Ball Diamond at Union. So, as, as somebody who's been there with their own kids, the benches were like four feet away from the roadway. There was, that was an obvious safety issue. The backstop was something that needed replacing and we basically have this park due to be replaced, assuming that our finance committee can find the appropriate funds in 2028 or 2029. So, we are looking at doing that in conjunction with some street work. So, there's, there are things on the agenda. There's opportunities for residents to certainly be involved as we move forward on that reconstruction in the coming years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lampy. Anything else on the minutes? Okay, I'll just move on. Communication Recommendations, B, Watertown Fire Department Monthly Report for August.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On 7A, I'm just wondering, even though there were some of those that were to be recognized, that we're not able to be here tonight, perhaps if we just publicly recognize them for their years of service during our meeting now?
Are they all listed there, right? I can do that.
Yeah, there, there are several.
So, Officer John Weiner, fifteen years of service. I'll make sure I don't miss anybody. Chief, do you recall Mrs. Fent, as you've been here twenty years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five as well, okay. So, Erin Fent has been with the department twenty-five years, Jonathan Weiner for fifteen years, Joe DeGrant for five years, Rainan McBroom for five years. And, okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, okay. Appreciate that. Good idea. Okay, we'll go to B then, the monthly report. I know Chief is online. Miss Davis?
So, I do have a question for Fire Chief, Fire Chief Rainan. Page twenty-three in our packet, I've been interested to watch the results as they come in for the Opticon and it still says that it's a little early to get the, to have accumulated the data necessary to draw any conclusions. But as you go down that page, page twenty-three, it has the ninetieth percentile all-zone turnout time, it's alarmed to, to en route, and then underneath that, the ninetieth percentile all-zone travel time alarm to first unit arrival. And then I see a note above the map that says administration is sharing the turnout times with staff so that they can find ways to improve this. So, as I look at that first ninetieth percentile all-zone turnout time, it has the benchmarks and it says that for EMS, it's sixty seconds, and then for fire, it's one minute, twenty seconds. And then as you look above, those numbers are a little bit higher. Is that what you're referring to, Chief, when you're talking with the staff about ways that they can improve the turnout time?
Yep, that's exactly what I'm referring to. So, of course, we have a larger station, so getting to the apparatus is gonna, you know, they used to be able to walk there and get there just in time and now they may have to pick up the pace, which is appropriate. But then also using the computers and getting accurate time reporting, you know, because calling over the radio and having the dispatchers, well, they do a fantastic job, that does take time. So, just making sure our times are accurate. And then just, you know, the overall urgency and making sure that we're aware of that, you know, our times are being tracked and this is the benchmarks that we're being held to matter. So, I share this, these numbers with you publicly, but I can break it down by crew and by apparatus as well. So, they can get a pretty dialed-in approach and see how things are doing it and we're doing some friendly competition as well.
And then I have a follow-up question for the chart underneath there where it has the ninetieth percentile all-zone travel time. Am I correct in my understanding that those times are the en route time? I'm sorry, is, is the alarm to en route time plus the travel time?
Yep, so that would, that should be, oh gosh, I'm, I'm looking through there. That should be from the alarm until the first unit arrives. So, since we're dispatched until we're on scene, and that's for all zones, so ninetieth percentile, so that's including our rural area as well.
That if we improve turnout time by, say, a minute, that will then reduce this time by about a minute to get us closer to the benchmark travel time?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Blanke?
Well, I too have some thoughts on this exact same topic. And I want to preface that by saying this is by no means a criticism of our chief, our fire department, or any of the employees that work in that department.
Okay.
But if we look at the very first graph and we look from January 1st to May 14th and then May 15th to July 16th, from the Jones Street to the Bernard Street, travel times, we have seen an increase of roughly forty-five seconds per call. Now, the size of a fire will double every thirty to sixty seconds. So, forty-five seconds is a lot of time when you're talking about a fire, much less a medical emergency. Now, I remember at one point Alderman Smith expressing extreme concerns with his district, especially the far northern reach of his district being the Country Club Lane area, where I'm assuming the travel time would be even greater. Now, I know that what's done is done, but this is extremely concerning, because we have an entire area of the city that has a response time that has lost at minimum forty-five seconds or more. And as I stated, a fire doubles in size every thirty to sixty seconds. So, I'm glad to hear that you're taking an active role, Chief, to find a way to reduce these times, especially at the turnout times. But this is one of those things where when this site was selected, this was one of the major concerns that was brought up. And these numbers are proving that concern true. I'm hoping the Opticon improves that, but I appreciate this data and I hope to see, continue to see it and to see improvement.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, everybody knows that we're dialed in and watching it and I can't change what is, but there are certain aspects such as our turnout time and other, and you know, adding the Opticon, and there's a few tweaks here and there. So, I'm working right now on accuracy of data to make sure that what we are doing and reporting is the best information that we can possibly provide all of you, because I know that the decisions you make matter. And that is another one of those reasons, like I know that there were studies done prior to my arrival here as chief and, and all of those decisions were made well ahead of me. But just doing, asking for that study and that strategic plan and that standards of cover was, was a request for the year, but we'll work to find a way of, of getting to that end goal eventually. So, thank you.
Actually, just to follow up on both points that were made, I, I, I think it's very preliminary to make any kind of comparisons and to be overly critical at this point, but I think the, the points that both older persons made are, are showing the, the concern that this council has on that topic, because it was one of the reasons why they justified the new fire disstation, that we needed to re-improve on the ninety-four percent response rate that we had at the existing location. And by going to the new one, we were given reassurance of that being improved and better. But I, I don't want to draw any conclusions, because I think we are needing another three to six months before we can have any kind of a firm opinion on that topic.
I don't disagree, and that's why we're continuing to monitor, looking ahead and looking backwards as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to C, Main Street Program Update. Ms. Stephanie Beer.
Hello, all. I believe it was about six months ago in April when I came and introduced myself to you. Steph, can you turn on the mic? Thanks. There we go. I think it was about six months ago in April when I came and introduced myself to you all, but I believe that this is the first time that you're getting an update from Main Street in 2025. That is due to some turnover with our directors and then I hit the ground running in April and got very busy with things and kind of put this off. I'll just admit that to you. So, tonight is going to be an overview of what we've done since January of 2025. As you know, Main Street is part of the Wisconsin Main Street program and the National Main Street Center. And so, in partnership with the city of Watertown and the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce, we work to build a vibrant, inclusive, and economically stable downtown through four strategic pillars. And those are economic vitality of our downtown, design and beautification, historic preservation, and then promotion and community engagement. And so, tonight, I'm going to go through each of those four pillars and just give you some quick talking points about what we've done so far this year. So, as far as economic vitality is concerned, we have supported recruitment and retention of downtown businesses. In fact, today, I met with someone who has a very interesting business that they'd like to bring to our downtown, and so we were talking through the possibility of buildings that might be available to him. We've, we are in the process of creating a merchant guide for our current businesses and then also for any future businesses that come to downtown. This would include essential contact information for the city, letting them know who their representatives are as far as our city council is concerned. It would also include contact information for Main Street program and for the chamber, event info, and then some business resources as well. We're also trying to provide technical support and training and promotion to our small business owners downtown. Just recently, through some research of a couple of our business owners, we found a way to make it a little less expensive for our business owners to get their fire extinguishers checked each year. And so, sharing that information with business owners to help them out. We also are hosting high-impact, revenue-generating events, including the Craft Beer and Seltzer Walk, Christmas in July, Women Only Weekend, which is coming up in November, our Witch's Brew Bingo is coming up just on Thursday night, and then Sweet Stroll and many other events that are drawing many visitors to our downtown. I would also like to add at this time that I'm very excited to work with Deb Seibel. She came and met with Lyndon PC and Robyn Kaufman on Monday at the Chamber Building and we're excited about some of the projects that we're gonna get to work with her on. Design and beautification is our second pillar. We installed and maintained seasonal flower pots and hanging baskets with dedicated volunteers. Eric is amazing, he deserves that award tonight. Dedicated volunteers watering early mornings, three to four times per week. We have a couple that does that, three to four times a week. You'll see them out at six o'clock in the morning, driving the truck and watering the plants. And we have gotten many compliments on those flower pots, the hanging ones especially. We are, we have organized and will organize downtown cleanup days and we have also supported the First Street Alleyway Revitalization Project that just was dedicated there and at the end of August. We're working closely with the city on planning for the 2028 Main Street Reconstruction Project and I appreciate those individuals that have answered my, all of my questions concerning that and, and getting me up to speed on what the Main Street Task Force has planned so far. Our third pillar is historic preservation. We have facilitated matching grants and expert guidance for 13 building facade improvements this year alone. To date, we have dispersed $5,800 with a total of $15,750 expected by project completion at the end of this year. They have until December 31st to complete any projects that they applied for and I foresee many of those finishing up before the end of this year. We're also working with vacant property owners to showcase local art and community events in their storefronts so that we don't have empty storefronts. And instead we'll be able to display some of that local art. And then working with tourism to develop an audio tour featuring our downtown's historic murals. So there would be a QR code next to the mural with someone speaking as to what it represents and how it came about. And then our final pillar is promotion and community engagement. I cannot sing Missy Kukon's praises enough. She is our farmer, farmer's market manager. Just in this summer alone, she has made great strides with our farmer's market. We have nearly 50 seasonal vendors that feature local produce, seafood, prepared foods, and artisan goods. She has invited live music, we've had workshops down at the farmer's market, and artisan booths enhance community connection. Just last week, this week, and now next week again, the Watertown School Board has been present to discuss a survey for a referendum that they want to put forward. There has been great civil conversations that have occurred down at the farmer's market the last two weeks and I'm excited to see that. We've also had strong partnerships, support food access initiatives like the Bread Basket, Jefferson County Foodwise, and Senior Nutrition Programs. I am excited to announce that two tons of food has been gleaned from the vendors just this summer alone and given to the Bread Basket here in Watertown. And then of course, infrastructure improvements, things that you don't see necessarily, and a lot of vendor vetting preserve the market's local, high-quality focus. And then finally, Missy was able to partner with downtown businesses this summer to direct, to direct patrons of the farmer's market to shop downtown. We did a passport program where if you went and shopped downtown and got 10 businesses checked off, then you were put into a drawing for a gift card to a downtown business so that you'll go back. And then finally, the fourth pillar is community events and outreach. We've hosted two Main Street meetups to encourage dialogue and idea sharing between business owners and the city leaders. These have primarily focused on the reconstruction of 2028, but it has also evolved into other conversations as well. We celebrated 25 years as a Main Street Program with a well-attended community event featuring history displays, art, music, and networking opportunities. This truly was a highlight for many and is something we are looking forward to doing at least once a year. We've decided that it was such a great event that we want to continue to do that. We did a Love Watertown Social Media Campaign in September, which brought much engagement to our social media pages. And I'm happy to say that 99% of that was positive engagement. It was a positive way for the community to give feedback about a variety of things. If you missed it, we asked questions like who serves the best burger downtown, who has the best cheese curds, tell us something that, a favorite bakery item from a store, or what's your favorite coffee that you order all the time? And so they were able to give feedback about those things and Main Street plans to continue to promote such campaigns in the future so that we can encourage positive feedback. So the impact of Main Street Program. Through collaborative leadership and consistent community involvement, the Watertown Main Street Program continues to grow downtown's economic resilience, its cultural identity, and its community pride. Watertown Main Street Program desires to continue to work with the city in the coming years to see growth and progress for Watertown. And I personally would like to thank many of you. I, I've sat in your office or you've come to mine and, and just allowed me to ask questions to get a better understanding of what I'm hearing is going on in the city and I just appreciate that so much. So, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Lampy?
Well, I don't have too many questions on this one. I, I do want to say that the, the council has, has been listening. We have, we have, in, in finance last night, we were going to pass a recommendation, a budget recommendation up to the full council that does increase our allocation and support for the Main Street Program in a small way. And of course, we have the Main Street Reconstruction and all of those improvements that we essentially owe the Main Street merchants in a few years that'll be reflected in the capital budget. So I hope that continues to sail through and be fully funded by, by the council. But that'll also, in part, I think, require a lot of continued support from the Main Street community.
And I thank you for the work that the Finance Committee has done on the budget. I know that it has been difficult this year and so I appreciate the work that's been done.
Just to make the comment that you had a deep, you had some deep and big shoes to fill with, with taking care of Melissa Lampy's job she did for all those years. And you've really stepped into it and done a real nice job, so I'm, I'm here to compliment you because I've seen it. Nice job.
Thank you, sir. And Melissa has been a good friend. She has stuck with it. She loves Main Street too. So she, just because she left the position doesn't mean she left Main Street.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, D, Street and Utility Capital Improvement Program overview.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to take this opportunity to give an overview of how our five-year capital improvement program for our street and utilities is put together, the methodology there. So in introduction, the Public Works Department refines the five-year CIP annually to address infrastructure needs. Our focus areas include utility upgrades, roadway improvements, drainage improvements, and safety enhancements. So there are a number of key project categories within the CIP. Probably the, the most recognizable is the utility and roadway reconstruction project. So this is replacing old infrastructure to ensure long-term reliability of our, of our water mains, of our sewers, of our roadways. Another kind of facet of the program is utility maintenance. So this is extending utility service life by spot repairs and things like cured and placed pipelining treatments. So the picture on the screen shows kind of the before of a pipe in need of some work. And then on the right, it's the after, that's after a cured and placed pipelining project where a liner is, it goes into the pipe, it's cured with steam or water, it hardens, and then the end product is very similar to a PVC pipe. You don't have to dig up the roadway. It's a very cost-effective way to rehab a pipe without the, the restoration associated with an open cut repair. Next, resurfacing projects. This enhances the pavement condition with milling and overlaying or pavement removal and replacement. Roadway maintenance, which includes activities like patching, crack sealing, seal coating, pavement marking to preserve the pavement to avoid those capital repairs before its time, so trying to extend the life of our pavement. Bike and pedestrian improvements, things like adding bike lanes, paths, and sidewalks for safety and connectivity. Sidewalk repair, ensuring safety, ADA compliance, and pedestrian accessibility. Bridge and dam maintenance, which safeguards our structural integrity of our bridges and dams and functionality. There are routine maintenance activities, things like, you know, surface repairs, and a lot of this is inspection-driven. So high-hazard dams versus low-hazard dams. We have one of each. Our upper dam is a low-hazard dam that's inspected every 10 years. And our lower dam is a high-hazard dam, which is inspected every two years. Those are kind of categories defined by DNR and the inspection schedule corresponds with the level of hazard if those dams were to fail. We perform biennial bridge inspections. This is a requirement of state law. So I think next year we're scheduled to inspect our bridges and from there we put together a maintenance program based on the outcomes of those inspections.
You do that locally, without outside involvement?
We work with the county, Jefferson County administers that program and they hire a consulting firm to inspect the bridges.
Okay.
So we kind of work closely with the county to get those inspections done. Drainage projects, which address flooding, stormwater runoff, and drainage improvements. Seawall and shoreline management to prevent shoreline erosion and protect habitat. WISDAQ coordination projects where city staff collaborate with the state on major roadway and infrastructure projects. We look for grants where we can, trying to stretch those dollars further by leveraging grants for priority projects. And then engineering design. So this is comprehensive project planning and design for efficient project implementation. This includes in-house planning and design projects through our Engineering Division and then hiring of engineering consultants for planning and design, which is overseen by our Engineering Division as well. So many divisions within the Public Works Department contribute to the CIP development. The Street and Solid Waste Divisions support resurfacing, roadway maintenance, bridge maintenance, and stormwater improvements. Our Water Division kind of heads up the water main replacements and lead service lateral program coordination. Our Waste Water Division oversees sanitary sewer upgrades and maintenance. The Stormwater Utility manages flood mitigation, pollution prevention, and maintenance. And then the Engineering Division oversees design, coordination, and CIP implementation. So a lot of funds go to contribute to the CIP. I'll just touch on this and won't go into a whole lot of detail, but Fund One, the operational fund, the Capital Fund, O5, the Water Utility Fund, O2, the Waste Water Utility Fund, O3, and then the Stormwater Utility Fund, 16, are the kind of usual suspects contributing to the CIP from a budgetary perspective. So there are a lot of steps in developing the five-year CIP and we do it collaboratively as a team. We evaluate current infrastructure conditions, assessing roads, utilities, and public drainage systems. We then prioritize based on need and funding, looking at things like safety, pollution prevention, community impact, and available funding. We incorporate our divisional goals and take stakeholder input into account. We review projects with our Public Works Team and incorporate feedback from community stakeholders. And then we plan for funding and resource allocation. We look for grant opportunities and then coordinate budgets together. So step one in that process, evaluating infrastructure conditions. We implement a program called Pacer. It stands for Pavement and Surface Evaluation Rating to look at pavement conditions. This was a program developed by UW Madison decades ago and it's commonly used nationwide to analyze pavement. It's required by state law that the city looks at all city streets every two years. So this coming year will be rating streets again. Streets are rated on a scale of one to 10, where 10 is a brand-new reconstructed street, perfect condition, and a one is a failed pavement, and then anywhere in between. So on the right, it shows a map of the city. This is an older map, but it, it helps illustrate the need and kind of the ratings. So red correlates to a lower Pacer rating, something around a one. The bright green corresponds to a high Pacer rating, something around a 10. And then the yellows and oranges fall in the middle. So we utilize our Geographic Information System, or GIS, to identify the needs rather quickly and then kind of go from there as far as which treatments and scopes of work might be necessary for some of these candidates. We also look at our citywide flood study that was developed by Rooker and Melkey over the last few years. Kind of overlay that with the pavement ratings and identify flood-prone areas, developing drainage improvement plans where the scope might be a little more involved from just a pavement replacement project. We review the existing storm sewer system, looking at things like television reports, infield inspections, and then desktop reviews. We look at things in the water distribution system like lead service lateral locations and a water main break analysis. So the picture on the right shows water main breaks in red. And from here, we can quickly and easily see areas where it might make more sense to do something beyond just a pavement replacement project, where the water main needs some work, where if we would overlay it or resurface, we might be digging it up relatively soon given the water main condition. So we review the age of the pipes and it's important to note that pipe materials perform differently over time. So just because a pipe might be old on paper, it doesn't mean that its performance kind of lacks. So a lot of the pipe from the early 1900s, turn of the century is actually quite good. It's high-quality ductile iron and looking at some of those pipes, it, it might not have any breaks in the network. Pipes around the 40s and 50s are generally lower quality and that's where we see a lot of our breaks. So just because it's old doesn't mean it needs to be replaced. It's something we look at as we put this program together. Our sanitary sewer collection system, we review the collection system condition and then identify maintenance versus replacement. CIPP lining is quite common nowadays versus a full replacement of a sanitary sewer line. It's a lot more cost-effective and efficient often to do a CIPP lining project versus a full removal and replacement. From there, we prioritize and refine the CIP. We look at criteria for projects like the infrastructure condition, the safety, and the impact on the community. We coordinate across divisions, aligning goals with Street Solid Waste, Water, Waste Water, Stormwater, and Engineering. We develop, develop our budget, looking to stretch dollars further with grant opportunities. And from there, we refine. We meet a couple of times a year as a team to kind of fine-tune the program based on different opportunities that come up or things that have come to our attention as far as priorities. And the long-term vision of the CIP, kind of in closing here, we look to align projects with strategic community development goals, ensure infrastructure resiliency through good planning, maximize funding opportunities with local, state, and federal grants, and then we look to maintain flexibility to adjust for emerging priorities. This is really just scratching the surface, so I'm happy to answer questions that I can tonight or follow up with you after this meeting, but with that, I'll turn it over if there are any questions.
Andrew, the summary you gave was, was excellent and it reminds all of us of how important that program and that department that you help oversee is to our city. Almost everything you touched about and talked about and brought up here is, is what people think of and appreciate in any city that's run, run in a real efficient-type way. But there's a couple of things that I just want to hit on and get you to maybe respond where you can. We increasingly, because of development requirements, are putting in detention ponds as a condition of development. And these ponds, like everything, require maintenance. And I, I know Marine's in the back and she's part of, of making sure that happens, but I, I, I feel like there's a decent number of these ponds that are in need of more active maintenance to make sure that, that they're working like they should. And, and that's just an observation and it's just based on maybe what I see and feel. So that's a comment. I am also, I've increasingly seen a lot of variance in, in seal coating quality and, and crack filling and things like that in a way that, you know, hiring someone to do that for us, especially with the importance of seal coating, you know, preserving a street and, and giving it a longer lifespan by doing it on a, on a, on a regular basis, predictable basis. So I'm, I'm of the concern that, in fact, I was in my own way a recipient of hiring a company and, you know, I, I feel like they just didn't have the quality of, of the work they did and I've, after six months of it being on, I'm already seeing wear and tear in a way that I shouldn't after six months of, of that seal coating being put down. So I'm, I'm just here to say that that increasingly seems like an important thing to make sure we get, you know... to make sure we get, you know, the right type of, uh, of a quality of an application so that it has the best chance of holding up for the three to five years or whatever length of time that we feel it should. Um, when I was on, uh, Public Works, the one, uh, thing that really amazed me is, uh, the ability to, um, they call it curing, in-pipe, uh, in-place pipelining. And for the life of me, to, to look at sewer that is, um, is, is in, you know, aged and it's, uh, wear and tear and to, to give it a new life by lining it with that type of, uh, of a coating, um, it, it, it makes everything inside, you know, obviously work for, uh, for, uh, an increased length, length of time. And the quality of that pipe has been enhanced and, and just added on to, uh, for many more years because of that versus, uh, digging up and starting over. So it's saving us a lot of money. Um, I think it's a miracle. Uh, I don't know quite how they do it, uh, even though I can sort of get an understanding of it. I'd, I'd love to see it someday just to understand how that can, uh, operationally be done. So I'm, I'm amazed at that and I think that's a godsend to, to have that to improve our, our ability to save money on storm sewer, sanitary sewer. Does that actually work for both, uh, storm sewer and sanitary or one or the other?
No, it works for both. And we've, we've done examples of both here in the city. Um, with the storm sewer, oftentimes you are dealing with larger pipes. So it's, it's somewhat of a, a trade-off with cost effectiveness, um, versus, you have to look at, you know, is it more cost effective to line it and not do restoration or replacing kind? Because when you get into the larger pipe diameters, you're, you're paying more per foot.
Oh.
Where sanitary sewer is generally smaller, um,
I see.
In some of the areas.
That makes sense.
We have done both.
Um, the, the topic that I, I was at, uh, a coffee shop, uh, yesterday and this individual was giving me a hard time on the fact that we increasingly as a city, and I think they were probably, he was probably talking about in general, but that we really don't, uh, ask for and in encourage citizen input when it comes to, uh, street repair and street improvements. We come up with our system of Pacer. We then identify streets based on that, uh, methodology. And then we, we identify them and we, we announce it and it all basically occurs without, uh, citizen input. So the, 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 the comment that I got there was that, you know, in, in the old days, you know, they would have, uh, these kinds of public hearings and people would come and tell everybody that their street is, uh, in worse shape and needs attention. And it, it felt like, in this person's view, that there was more ability and more, uh, opportunity for, uh, for citizen input in the past. And they were asking us to, uh, do what we can to, to make that still happen, uh, for input to, uh, to occur. Now, I, I know people on our council, including myself, we get comments from our own citizens within our districts. And then they then, uh, are on our mind. So when we are talking to people within the committee, we hopefully make those kind of comments known to people like you, uh, so that that's known. That's probably the, the easiest way to try to give input is individually to, uh, older persons so that they can, uh, give it to people like yourself. But then we still go back to the Pacer system. But I, I think just to, uh, give the comment that, uh, that's an important part of what we feel is democracy, where people have input and they help contribute to our decision. And I think we, where we can, we need to try to remind ourselves of that.
Mr. Lampy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was just going to ask, ask the question on the Pacer system. Is that still available on our public GIS viewer?
It should be. I'll look into that. If it's not, we can have it added.
Yeah, I think that may have, that may have dropped off, but I will say that in, um, in relation to some of the comments Alder Berg made, that's one of the useful tools that I have in terms of educating folks in terms of why their street may or may not be at the top of the list.
Mr. Blankey, go ahead.
So I have some questions about the Pacer rating system in and of itself. Um, am I correct, uh, that it's, it's not simply based on the condition of the asphalt? It's also based on traffic condition, or traffic patterns and what type of street it is? Like if it's an arterial, a collector or a local street, that, that also has an impact on its Pacer rating?
It doesn't on the Pacer rating per se. Um, a lot of the things like traffic counts might go into how a street might deteriorate. Where the status of arterial versus collector come into play more often for, for our department is grant applications with state, um, STP urban, STP local, where a collector or arterial street might be eligible for, for grant dollars where a local street might not be. But as far as the Pacer rating, it's, um, more looking at roadway defects and it doesn't necessarily take traffic counts or, um, classification into account there.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Mayor, could I just make a brief comment, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Arnett.
Thank you. I just want to note that the capital improvement plan you're seeing right here is, is not a wish list. It's a carefully prioritized list of projects that are based on systems like Pacer and other evaluation systems in combination with external factors such as federal and state mandates and federal and state funding. So, you know, it's not, it's not a wish list. It's, here's the priority of what we need to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Good going, Tony.
You good, Mr. Mullenhour?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, uh, Ms. Lane's business. We have the payroll summary from September seventeenth through the thirtieth. I can take them all together. Uh, paid invoices report since from September and cash investments from September thirtieth. Any, uh, questions? Mr. Lampy?
There's an entry on page seventy-six that I think has caught a couple of our eyes. I'll give Mark a second here to catch up here. On page seventy-six of our packet underneath, boy, what section is that? I'm not going to say what section that is. That's under the main section there. Uh, but if you look about two-thirds down the page, we have an entry that starts at ninety-eighty-four with a date of oh-nine-two-five-two-five on it for an amount of eight thousand one hundred six dollars and, and seventy-three cents. Is that something that has been resolved, has been charged back? Or is that something we have to carry forward?
Yes, there's no problem with this. I'll explain that, um, I caught it. It's our Zoom account and Zoom itself charged us for a different City of Watertown's bill. And, um, at the time that I called Zoom, they didn't know what they had done wrong. So I immediately canceled my card and claimed it as a fraudulent, uh, claim and all. So it happens to be that the twenty-fifth is at the end of our credit card cycle. So otherwise you wouldn't have seen it at all because it would have netted itself out. But yes, it's all taken care of.
Yeah, appreciate you finding and fixing that.
Anybody else?
It was pretty easy. Our Zoom charge is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents a month.
So, so it was almost the same number. All right, uh, next there is a memo under licenses. Hold under B. Review and take action application for a temporary Class B malt liquor license from Rotary Club of Watertown at eight sixteen Southern Street for the YMCA auction on November eleventh during the hours of four-thirty to ten o'clock. Mr. Barts?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Barts. Second by Smith. Okay, any discussion or questions? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, C, review and take action application for a Class A malt liquor license from Watertown Mart LLC, located three thirty Summit Avenue for licensing year July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Move for approval? Motion by Blankey. Second by Barts.
Can we add the conditions on there, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Including past inspections, uh, successful CUP and surrender of current license issued to the premises. With those conditions, I'll retake a motion, please.
I'd like to amend my motion to reflect the conditions noted.
Okay, motion by Blankey and second by Barts. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Okay, questions, discussion? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. D, review and take action application for operators license from Allah Jarig. Mr. Blankey.
I'll make a motion for denial based on the category one as noted in the licensing board memo.
Okay, motion by Blankey for denial under category one. Second by Barts. Okay. Questions or comments on that? Okay, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, resolutions. Exhibit nine-seven-nine-two, resolution to approve forty-eight on ninety-six off MOU with local eight-seven-seven of the International Association of Firefighter AFL-CIO-CLC, sponsored by myself and the Finance Committee. Mr. Lampy?
I move to approve this resolution.
Motion by Lampy.
I'll second.
Second by Davis. Okay, any questions or comments on it? Mr. Berg?
I'm on Finance Committee and I took it procedurally as, uh, probably no big deal. And I, I didn't give it a lot of thought. I ju- I read it, uh, in my own way, but I, I, I just felt it, um, you know, was being suggested or recommended and in some way I didn't feel the need to be critical. But I've given it more thought and I've, uh, i- if it becomes, um, tonight for action, I'm, I'm really wanting, uh, our, our chief, if she's able to still, uh, chime in on this topic and give, uh, explanation for. But for the life of me, you know, when I just read, I, I know it's on a trial basis. I know the intent is to evaluate and make a decision on its merit. But the, the idea of having two consecutive twenty-four hour shifts, um, I mean, it's not practical. So somewhere in that forty-eight hours, uh, there's going to be some type of break time. Um, and that is, uh, twenty-four times two is forty-eight. Um, again, I don't know, again, uh, what constitutes, um, a work week here on, on the way this is being defined, but...
She just came on, if you want to let her answer, Mr. Berg.
Yeah, I just want to finish my point for just for a minute.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Berg.
Let me just finish, uh, another co- comment related to that, though. I, 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 I want to know, um, the motivation for, uh, I read in some of the other parts of this, um, resolution that, you know, the, the union, um, is only to share, uh, the vote of the union, uh, uh, in twenty-six. Uh, we'll, we'll hold a, a membership vote on this topic and, and the vote will only, um, be an opinion that, uh, that our chief can take for, can, into consideration. But it has no binding effect on, on that decision of whether we, uh, stay with it or not. So I know what we, we currently have and I, and I know that this is a, a, a fairly major departure from that. There's obviously advantages to it, but I, I just, for the life of getting productivity and getting the best out of our employees, um, putting them into a, a back-to-back type of, uh, schedule and, and, and to reward them with forty-eight hours, our, our, actually four days, four days off, um, just seems, uh, is, who's, who's really benefiting? And is the public really, uh, the beneficiary of this approach?
Right, and that's why it's on a trial basis because we all do share the concern of is a forty-eight hour shift too long, especially for the workload of our call volume. Um, and that's why in the MOU, it states specifically that if operational needs and if the staff are showing, um, that they are too tired to, to function appropriately, then I can change it immediately. It is just a trial basis. Um, the motivation is, is that when you do work a twenty-four hour shift and then go home and then come back and then go home and then come back, um, they have increased fatigue, um, because studies are showing that they have increased fatigue the night before, coming out on duty and that you're, you know, you're gearing up and you're not having very good rest coming into shift either. So what we're looking to do is stabilize the, um, the work and home, uh, changes, I guess, is the best way, rather than having the on-off, on-off, on, four days off rotational, um, kind of always messing up the schedule. So this will be a more stable transition between on-duty or off-duty. Um, so that's kind of the goal of why we're agreeable to the trial basis. Um, this ends on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six unless we have an agreed motion to continue the MOU or have negotiated into the contract. Um, and we have expressed, uh, ability as the fire chief to be able to go back to the standard or the current schedule per se. Does that answer your question, Mr. Berg?
Uh, it, it does. It does give me some of the explanation for why. Um, so within that two days of, of continuous type of per se work, um, do they, are they allowed then to, uh, to take naps and, and, uh?
Yep. Yes, just like we currently are, they, uh, they all can go to bed around nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night. We try to rest, um, and they're expected to be up and on the floor around six, six-thirty to be relieved of their shift at seven AM currently. Um, and I, we have the plans of allowing them to sleep when there is no calls at night currently. So their work hours that they work per pay period does not shift. They're still going to be working a fifty-six hour pay period, um, or a fifty-six hour work week. So a hundred and twelve hours per pay period, which is obviously more than a forty-hour work week or eighty-hour pay period like most people. Um, and so that, the hours of work does not change. It's just of when they're doing it.
And are the, are, are the workers, are the, the firefighters, are the, are the, the, the staff that are, you're overseeing, are they, uh, at this point, uh, are they receptive to the idea of, of trying this approach?
Yep, they're actually the ones that have come to me, um, very early on when I first started and I said, "We're not doing it when we're building a station, so please be patient." Um, and then we have met after, I think we started kind of discussing it in the strategy of what we wanted to do, um, in July or August. Um, and then, and then worked to this trial agreeance, um, for going into twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Mr. Lampy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that although we don't have the minutes from the October thirteenth meeting, that is the one where we did have a chance to discuss this, uh, in closed session. We did have an opportunity to consult with the city attorney. Uh, this is an agreement that really came to us after it had already been negotiated between the city and, uh, the fire union. We were happy to hear that all parties were ready to move forward. And as the chief just stated, there are certain provisions in here that protect the city in terms of life safety or other initiatives that, that we would basically have to put in place uh, if this plan actually showed that it was not the right one for this, this trial. Um, I, I just want to say that all of this has been discussed extensively at finance and I believe passed unanimously at that level.
Thank you, Mr. Lampy.
And it winds up being exactly the same hours. The current California is out of five days, on, off, on, off, on, and then four days off in a row, two to three shifts. Although there might be on for forty-eight straight hours, currently they are sometimes if there's overtime. And sometimes if they're supposed to get down to seven o'clock or there's a call, they're working into their day off. So oftentimes their day off is not twenty-four hours. So I thought on this, we give them consecutive days off, kind of like a person that usually has a weekend. If instead they had Wednesdays and Sundays off, they don't get as much rest without having two days off in a row, so. And the chief does have the chance, if it seems it's not working, to cancel it. I'm hopeful it makes everybody happier and more well rested. Anybody got any que- more questions?
Just one and it's barely, uh, nuts and bolts. Um, and obviously this has been worked out with the union and the chief, but, um, what happens, uh, in, in the instance of, obviously our firefighters get vacation time. And one of the concerns i- in even the industry I work with a twelve-hour shift is covering vacation times where individuals are supposed to have four days off in a row. And someone's on vacation. And someone's on vacation, obviously, you have to cover that shift with another person. How do you manage that to avoid someone, say, working 36 hours in a row or more? Because what I like about this schedule is I think the mental health for the firefighters, because what they do, I can't imagine running into a burning building and the things that they see. So, I think the four days off is probably beneficial to their mental and physical health. And if you have to cut that short, that's where I have the concern, so it just kind of, can you explain to me how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the schedule that we're working between the 4896 and the California doesn't really affect the vacation time off. What affects their time off for vacations is more of how we upstaff for that. So, currently, our minimum staffing is seven personnel per day, so, but we have nine personnel assigned to each shift. So, we can have up to two people on vacation and as long as nobody is sick or out on FMLA or medical leave and everybody is certified appropriately, then those people that have vacation will be on vacation, so that we can cover for their time off like that. We do have to hire back or force people to work, but we won't force them if they're on vacation. They would only be forced to stay and hold over extra if they're going off shift, if that makes sense. And that would be for if somebody calls in sick or something that we can't plan for necessarily.
Thank you.
Mr. Lampy, I believe.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts? Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, exhibit 9793. Submit of STP urban funding application for Clark Street, sponsored by myself and the Finance Committee. Ms. Davis?
Approve exhibit 9793.
Okay, yeah, motion by Davis, second by Smith. Okay, discussion or questions?
Davis? Lampy? Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Molenhauer?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next, exhibit 9794. Resolution requesting exemption from Jefferson County Library Tax, sponsored by myself.
I'll move production.
Okay, motion by Berg.
I would so second.
Okay, thanks, Myron. Second by Molenhauer. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I to make an amendment to this resolution, specifically an amendment by deletion, deleting the final provision which is headed fiscal note, estimated municipal 2026 library appropriation, $810,000. I have two reasons. One is, first of all, I believe that's unnecessary. The third, whereas paragraph here in the resolution is...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but as a point of order, I'll second the motion so that comments can be made.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Arnett.
I have a second.
Okay, Myron did do a second already, Mr. Arnett.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, thank you, though, okay.
Right, thank you, sorry.
There's an amendment, though, that Mr. Smith, that started, there's an amendment that he had started.
That's what I mean, I was seconding the amendment.
Oh.
Before he can discuss his reasons, he needs to have a second to the amendment.
Gotcha, okay. The original motion was by Berg, second by Molenhauer, now the amendment is by Smith and the second by Arnett, gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Okay, thank you, yes. Specifically, just a simple amendment by deletion, which is that one section, one line that is unnecessary. Reason it's unnecessary is because within the text of the resolution is a much more definitive language relating to the basis for which we qualify for exemption, which is meeting the expenditure requirement. So, the third, whereas paragraph states, whereas the city of Watertown will in 2026 appropriate and expend an amount in excess of that calculated above. That's the financial commitment that will trigger the exemption that we're applying for. The second reason is it may very well not be accurate. We annually make these resolutions for purposes of gaining this exemption from both counties and I don't ever remember such a fiscal note being added and the primary reason is because we approve the request for exemption prior to the approval of the budget. The budget is typically approved and in this year, our approval date is anticipated to be December 2nd. So, we can't be specific about what will be the amount and that's not necessary. So, I think it would be a cleaner resolution and it would be sufficient based upon the text of what actually is part of the resolution and is not simply attacked on fiscal note at the end.
So, you want that line eliminated, is what you're saying, Mr. Smith?
The deletion of the final line, fiscal note, estimated, et cetera, through the amount that's estimated.
Okay, motion, a second to eliminate that line. Comments, Mr.?
Our city clerk followed the county forms that were sent to us and both of those county forms, we just confirmed, has that language on the bottom of their forms and so whether it's legal or not, we were just adhering to what came to us in the office.
Okay.
A real quick look at Section 4364, it doesn't appear that there's anything requiring this line in the form, but it is a county form. Maybe recommend following the county form if we want to be so exempt from this tax.
Mr. Lampy?
In just a quick review of previous years, it looks like all of our submissions, if you just go back and like the, you know, I don't know, MoD code or whatever we call it, MC meetings, those do have the approximate entry of how much we're expected to provide for the library on the city, so it's a pretty standard practice for at least the last couple of years. On the legislative piece, if you do dig into 4364, it does ask the counties to make a calculation, so they need a number in terms of what the municipal contribution is versus what the county contribution is.
And both of the counties do do all of the calculations and send those to us and also we get the numbers from both of the counties individually and we have to make sure that our number is equal to the sum of the two counties.
Okay. Hallie, have a recommendation or?
The amount that is specified here is not the number that would trigger the qualification for the exemption. So, it adds nothing. We're making a commitment to fulfill that and I believe when we were in the midst of discussing various financial aspects of the library appropriation, I think we were told that it was somewhere around $527,000, which was the amount that would qualify us for filing for and gaining the exemption. Massively different from this and without having passed the budget, we have no idea if that is going to be the amount that is included in the budget, but what we do know and what we would be making commitment to in this resolution is that we will appropriate and expend an amount in excess of the calculated minimum. And we've made that commitment in the text of the resolution.
I think we're extending a little bit beyond what we hope to discuss tonight. But again, if you delve into 4364, Section 2, Section C, 2, one of the provisions there is to make sure that we stay at least no less than the average of the last three years. I don't know what that is offhand, but at least if we stay higher than the average of our expenditures in the library for at least three years, we should be fine. I don't even know if 810 is enough at the moment. But there's language in this provision that is very specific to calculations and promises that the city has made. So, it's, I don't think we have enough information to act on whether or not we need to omit this from the county's form and I have no idea what this is going to do for the county's process if we decide that we're going to send back the form with one of their key numbers that they ask for from all municipalities.
We have to have these forms back to the counties by November 1st.
I think we qualify without having to put that information in, so I'm not in favor.
Hallie?
I would recommend following this form and the requested information by the county, also noting that it does state that it's an estimated municipal 2026 contribution that is not by any means locking this council into that number due to the estimated statement.
Then what does that add in light of the absolutely definitive commitment we made within the text of the resolution? This adds nothing.
But it is something that...
Myron, Mr. Molenhauer?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, if I might make a suggestion. I would withdraw my second if the person who made the motion would withdraw the motion until we get some definitive numbers.
I couldn't understand that.
He said that he wishes to, well, actually, Mr. Molenhauer, Mr. Arnett made the second to that. You seconded the original motion to get on the table, okay? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Blankie?
Is the resolution what we send to the county or do we send a form to the county? You've referenced a form that the county has us fill out. We're passing a resolution, are the two the same thing? So, we send this resolution to the county? Thank you.
And to meet their deadline, county's deadline, we have to submit that by November 1st to be considered for the exemption.
Okay. Anybody else who will take a vote? Okay.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
No.
Lampy?
No.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
No.
Motion failed? I'm sorry, motion carried.
Five, four?
Yes.
I forget which one it was. Point of order?
Five, three.
I'm sorry. Mr. Blankie?
I have not voted.
Oh.
No.
Okay. Mr. Wetzel?
I didn't fall asleep, but I would like to re-vote if, is it possible?
We're voting on the amendment?
Yes, yes, we are.
Yeah, I think it was confusion there, let's start over again, okay? We'll re-vote on that.
So, we're voting on the amendment?
On the amendment, that Mr. Smith and Mr. Arnett seconded, yes, to take the line out.
Smith? Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
No.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy?
No.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts? Blankie?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, failed five, four. Okay. Okay, thank you. We're now on the original exhibit. Any more questions or concerns on it?
I just want to make a little bit of a reminder that I I've been on this council at different times, because of term limits, I was off for two years and I would go back on for up to six years, but in all that time, when I first went on in 1995, shortly after, we had the example here at one point of paying both at the municipal level and at the county level and it was, at that time, Mayor Smith and his initiative of actually showing the double taxation that was occurring and asking that for the Health Department and for the library that we be recognized for that double taxation and it led to the legislation and the action that we take on and were eligible for each year. But it all came from somewhere and I just want to give credit where it's due because it wasn't always this way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berg. If nothing else, we'll take a roll call on the actual exhibit then.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next is 11 comments and suggestions from citizens present, if you wish to...
Resolution.
We do, I'm sorry, D. Took it out of me, sorry. Exhibit 9795, thank you, Mr. Smith. Resolution requesting exemption from Dodge County Library Tax, sponsored by myself. Mr. Smith?
May I make a motion that we approve exhibit 9795?
Okay, motion by Smith?
Second.
Second by Blankie. Any discussion questions on that? Okay, all right, Megan.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis? Lampy? Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, move on to 11, comments and suggestions from citizens present. If you wish to speak, you may state your name and address, have up to three minutes. You can just state your name, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm Josh Archibald, I am the VP of the Union. I just want to say thank you guys for allowing us to trial the 4896. Means a lot to us, we're all super excited and hopefully the health benefits, I know I did a lot of research on it, so I just want to say thank you, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, it means a little shorter than what I had last night, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I would so move.
Thanks, Myron. All right, motion by Molenhauer? Second. Second by Barts. Okay, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, thank you. You can tell he was a team friend, I raised my hand.